And welcome to the February ninth, two thousand and fifteen regular board meeting of the Waterloo Community School District. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we'd like to begin with a moment of silence this evening. Thank you. Would you all please stand and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start this evening with our mission statement. And Mike Young, would you mind reading that for us tonight? I didn't ask you ahead of time.
Of course.
Sorry about that.
I would be happy to. The Waterloo Schools community commits to a comprehensive system of education and support to assure that each and every student will graduate prepared for college, career, and citizenship, as evidenced by continuing education, pursuing a career path, and contributing to a community.
Thank you. You read very well on the spot. That's awesome. And now we come to the time in our meeting for information from individuals and delegations. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to address the board? Anybody? All right then, we'll move on ahead. Our consent agenda this evening consists of five items: the minutes of the January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen regular board meeting, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, the request to the Cedar Valley Sports Commission and Waterloo Hotel Motel tax grants for the Battle of Waterloo, phone service for all Waterloo Community Schools, and internet service for Waterloo Community Schools. Are there any items that anyone would like to have withdrawn from that agenda? Items D and E.
And unfortunately, I'll have item B, which is bills due and payable.
Items B, all right.
Just down to two.
So we're down to two. So with that, I will put a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda, less items B, D, and E. So we will be voting on items A and C. Can I get that motion on the table?
Also move?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And nay, same sign. Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is passed. Let's move on to item B then on page four. The Board of Education approved the bills due and payable and the bills paid between board meetings.
Okay. And before this motion gets on the floor, I'll abstain from voting on this because as an attorney, I represent a client who's paid by one of the bills.
All right.
And I think for quor-- I think we're okay with quorum, correct? Okay. It can be just a majority.
Right.
Okay.
But I do need the both of you.
Your plurality.
I need one of you two to--
Someone move.
Thank you.
Someone move.
Either way. Okay. It's been moved and seconded.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the bills due and payable, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
I'll abstain.
One abstention, and chair votes aye. Motion carried. Let's move on to item D on page seventeen.
And move the Board of Education approve the phone service proposal from Sentrylink and sign the applicable agreements.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I think I see that Mr. O'Brien is here at the podium.
Good evening. Well, I won't say it's a routine item, but it is certainly an item that the board has seen before. The one difference this time is that, for those of you that have been on the board for a while, you're aware that the federal E-Rate program, the Universal Service Fund program, provides school districts and libraries with subsidies towards phone and internet service. It's noted in the board document, but I thought it was worth noting, pointing out that they're actually phasing out that support for phone service, so that's why you see costs increase through future years. It isn't that our contract amounts are going up. It's that the amount that we're getting back through that federal program is going to be going down, so that will obviously affect the amount that we're paying. And I did just want to point out, just so the board is aware, and this isn't in your board packet, the FCC has decided to phase out funding towards phone service in an effort to provide more funding for internal connections, what they call category-two connections. So we're hoping to be able to utilize some additional funding to kind of supplement this towards some upgrades in our buildings down the road, most notably wireless access points and network pieces. So I've actually been working, and we're out to bid right now for some of that equipment right now, but we won't know whether or not we'll actually get funded through the E-Rate program until probably summer or fall. So at the point when, if we're successful in funding, then we'll obviously bring that to you for your consideration as well, but just wanted to give you all a heads up. Happy to answer any questions.
Concerning the pots, plain old telephone service lines, has schools different than individuals in the sense that there's a diminishing need for them?
So I won't put schools and individuals in the same category. I will put schools and larger organizations in the same category. Really, all of our phone service is not routed out as far as, you know, us calling, what you would view as phone service at least, are not routed out, those pots lines. But those are primarily there for, are for alarm lines, and there's actually code that necessitates us having a certain amount of those lines because they're not contingent on power. So the vast majority of those pot service lines are there for fire alarms, burglar alarms, elevators, those type of critical functions, which by code, we have to actually have a physical phone line as opposed to a digital or an electronic phone line. The vast majority, or really all of our actual phone service, or what you and I think of as phone service when you pick up the phone and call someone, is not routed out of those. It's actually routed out of the PRI lines, which are those larger circuits that you also see as part of the bid.
Okay.
And Matt, just as a refresher, the E-Rate is, it's a tax everybody pays on their phone bill that goes into a pot and then is given to schools?
Well said, Mr. O'Brien. Yes. It's a program that's been around for over a decade that we've been leveraging as long as possible for those services. And yeah, if you look at your cellphone or internet bills, there's at some point a line item there that'll say something like Universal Service Fund or USF, which is a tax that is added on to those bills. It goes into a pool of money that then the FCC has a third-party administer that schools and libraries then can apply to receive funding. And the funding that we receive is based off a number of factors, but the biggest factor is your free and reduced lunch rating. So obviously, it's weighted towards schools and libraries that serve higher-needs population. Basically, the goal of the program was to ensure that there wasn't that type of divide, you know, that children and then also communities in terms of libraries were able to access those services. So that's what the goal of the program's been.
Thank you.
You bet. Anything further for Matt? Mr. O'Brien, pardon me.
You're just fine.
I'm getting it right. All right. Then all those in favor of the motion to approve phone service for the Waterloo Community Schools, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. And move on to item E on page twenty-eight.
And move the Board of Education approve the internet service proposal from Sentrylink and sign the applicable agreements.
I'll second.
Great. And Mr. O'Brien, the floor is yours.
Well, I can be more succinct with this one because this is, again, I won't say routine, but there's no changes from what the board has been used to, other than it's been an interesting progression over the last several years as far as our bandwidth needs have gone. When I started in this role in an interim basis, when I took over, we were actually at twenty-five megabit, and now, what, seven, six, seven years later, and you have a proposal for gigabit service before you. So it's been interesting to see, obviously, our needs change, but then also, quite honestly, the costs pretty dramatically changed as well, where it's very affordable for us to be able to bring this service in, particularly when we look at the subsidy that we'll receive through the E-Rate program.
Now, the E-Rate discount doesn't decrease on this?
Correct. Yes. The FCC has been trying to move away from phone service to be able to bridge that divide in terms of internet access. So they're doing that twofold. One is by ensuring they're continuing to support the E-Rate program through internet, and then the second being, as I mentioned earlier, trying to provide more funding to schools to increase those internal connections that then are the vehicle to get on to the internet in terms of wireless access and network equipment.
So is the one gigabit substantially better than the five hundred? I mean, how much would we use that? My question here is, the ICN does have a pretty attractive bid at the five hundred level for some reason.
Sure. So, yeah, I was a bit perplexed by their pricing, quite honestly. Well, I was a bit perplexed when I initially saw the pricing. If you get to know a little bit more about the ICN and how their network is structured, it makes a little bit more sense, and I won't bore you all with the technical details of that. Two points to your question, Mr. Schmidt. The first is, this is a three-year contract. Quite honestly, we may not need that additional bandwidth next year, but I would foresee by the end of the three-year contract that we would. But secondly, and more importantly, the ICN's bid actually didn't meet our bid specifications. We specified that they needed to bring the service into the new tech facility. That's obviously where our new data head-end is. And the ICN bid their service actually coming into Hawkeye Community College, which actually is where our current service is through with them, and then we're actually using, it's a little bit of an interesting scenario, but we're actually using our MediaCom fiber to then pump it into the ESC. We haven't been very thrilled with that arrangement as it is right now anyway, so we were looking to move away from that and actually bring the service directly into the facility that we wanted. And then obviously, that facility that we wanted was our new tech facility where all of our equipment is going to be at. So quite honestly, I included the ICN bids just so the board could see that for comparison's sake, but really, that bid needed to be disqualified because they didn't meet the bid specifications.
So why would their one-gig bid be four times their five hundred?
Um, so, again, it was a little perplexing on the surface as well. Without getting too technical with you, and obviously, I can't speak for the ICN, so I'm just kind of speaking off the cuff from my experiences working with the ICN, is it has to do with the amount of capacity they have currently coming into the node that they're servicing us from. So my assumption is, is that for them to move from the five-hundred-megabit service to a gigabit service, that would require some additional capacity upgrades because they have other entities that they're serving out of that location. But again, that's my assumption. I'm speaking for them, which I probably shouldn't do.
Okay. Thank you.
And Matt, just from my own memory, we used to have, I was just asking Dr. Lindman about this, the ICN connection used to be out from Hawkeye to Orange, correct? The old Orange building? Did we have--
No, actually, when we were looking at initially upgrading our service from twenty-five megabit to, at that time, it was a hundred megabit, so it was a four-time jump at that point. Initially, we were looking at actually installing district-owned fiber between Hawkeye and Orange because that seemed like the most cost-effective solution. Quite honestly, at that point, MediaCom actually stepped up to the plate, and MediaCom, who, all of our, what I call WAN fiber, which is basically the fiber that connects all of our buildings as part of the franchise agreement that MediaCom has with the City of Waterloo, our fiber with that is through them. They stepped up the plate and also got us fiber out to Hawkeye, so it wound up even being cheaper for us just to route through that MediaCom fiber. So good recollection in that. That was a possibility, but it actually never materialized for that reason.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for Matt?
Thank you, Matt.
You bet. Thank you. Then all those in favor of approving the internet service for the Waterloo Community Schools, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That brings us to our next item on our agenda, which is the policy changes. This is up for second reading, and it is in regards to the school day. It's on page forty-six, and I believe Tara Thomas is here to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you. This is just the second reading of the school day changes that essentially will allow for changing our calendar to an hours versus days.
And I should get that motion on the table that the board approve the following policy school day.
Also move?
Thanks.
Second.
Thanks. And are there any questions for--
No.
This really just gave us flexibility. Is it correct?
Yes, and I think you answered it.
Okay. Does it also standardize across the schools?
I'm not sure that the policy was intended to do that, but the school calendar legislation will do that because, well, let's say this. It will standardize the minimum. So one school may have a three-minute or a five-minute difference, but it will standardize the minimum. Am I speaking correctly, Calendar Committee, co-chairs?
Yes, you are. And this is really to give the board flexibility. In case, for example, we find the school day versus hours more amiable to education, the board can do that. So it's going to be on the books.
And I missed the last board meeting, so I assumed when I read this, looked through it, that it was for the hours versus days. It doesn't change contracts or anything like that, is it? Okay. Got it. That was all I had.
Anybody else? Anything further? Okay. Then all those in favor of the policy, the second reading of the policy on six-oh-one-point-one school day, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Thank you, Tara. The next item on our agenda is with the, I actually believe it's Grantwood, not Grandwood. I think that's a typo. Am I right, Michael? It is grand with a D? Okay. With the Grandwood Consortium for SBRC Application for Special Ed and Administrative Costs. This is actually for the current year, and our next motion after that will be for the coming year on this. So if we can get that motion on the table, and that recommendation is that the board approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for special education administrative costs associated with Grandwood Consortium programs for the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen school year as presented.
Also move?
And a second? Thanks, Angela. With that, I'll turn it over to Michael Coughlin.
Thank you. Back in November of fourteen, we had looked at a motion similar to this that dealt with the River Hills facility that is operated by the AEA two-six-seven, and the fiscal agent is Cedar Falls. This is in regard to a change in law that started back in two thousand and thirteen, December, where the DE was trying to straighten out how special ed costs were allocated, identified, and costed to special ed or the general fund in an appropriate, consistent manner. And they had gone through a couple of different steps because two years ago, we had to go through quite a process to take Castle Hill back from AEA to being run by the district. Only a district could run a consortium of special ed services. And they, through studying this for a year or two years, they basically flip-flopped the other way and said, no, it's really more clear to make a consortium out of this, where everybody that's within that arena that sends children to that consortium have a voice in it, have a, the superintendents gather to review things and give recommendations and oversee, but with that, we also share the cost. Normally, special ed costs are pretty distinct, that it is the educational instructional cost of a special needs student. Well, in the majority of the districts in the state, they just meld into the regular district, so a principal in a building may be able to just cover the special ed requirements. Well, when you get into bigger districts, there's so many kids that it's not feasible for that person to take on that added responsibility. So it's not strictly an instructional cost for special education, but it is an allowance by the SBRC to say, yes, there are circumstances that it does make sense to approve administrative costs to special ed programs that are either larger districts or are a consortium of several smaller districts. And that's what we approved with River Hills for the current year in November. And now, this is Grandwood, and it is actually from the Woodward Granger School District, and they have a consortium of forty different kids. They're a pretty small district, but they are a consortium of an AEA or of special ed services, and they have forty children in there that they bill to many different districts. Well, we only have one within that, and if you look at the detail on the bottom of page forty-nine, what this is, is the administrative cost. Basically, the principal or the superintendent or assistant that is over this program, and the law allows for that consortium to bill the other districts that cost. Now, in the one thing that we don't know yet, because this is so new, the SBRC has not given a decision to whether they will do the salary plus FICA and IFRS, or if it will just be the salary. We don't know that yet until they meet and make a decision. So it's broken down on the bottom of page forty-nine, that there's forty students. Just the salary portion is just under a hundred and eight thousand, so divided out by forty is where you get the number of twenty-six ninety-seven and ninety cents. And then you add the FICA and IFRS to that, and it's a little over thirty-one hundred dollars. So this is an evidence of saying it's actual cost. It's based on the person that's there, it's based on the number of kids that are there. Five to eight years ago, special education costs were just an exchange of revenues. Whatever we got for the student in the waiting, we would pass on. Well, that's not accurate in the new, it's been that way for several years now, probably five to eight years of saying, no, you have to bill each other the actual cost. So a student that you may get ten thousand dollars for may cost twenty thousand dollars. And the district that gets the ten thousand has to pay the twenty, because if they were in our district, we would have to do the same thing. So that's why when you look at a comparison of these two consortiums, one of them is charging about the same dollar amount for administrative cost, a little over a hundred thousand, but one has forty students in it and one has over a hundred. So we have to pay the actual cost. So this kind of applies to how both of these agenda items are being addressed. So with this, the recommendation for the current school year, just like we did for River Hills in November, this is for Grandwood Consortium for the current year of fourteen fifteen, that we would approve the application to the SBRC of the three thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars that we can now charge to special ed. Under current law, we can't unless the SBRC says, yes, it is a viable special ed expenditure. We will allow you, allow all the districts that are within this, to apply that to special ed funding. And that's what these, both of these motions are doing. They say, under normal law, we wouldn't be able to do that. We would just have to absorb it under general cost. But because it's a special situation, a consortium or a large district, the SBRC allows us to charge that to our special ed waiting.
Michael, did you say that they're meeting in March on that FICA and IFRS? How long will it take for us to know whether that's being covered?
I'm just going by memory off my calendar. I think it's the end of February.
Okay.
Because in, as we look at River Hills for next year, was what they're really going to act on both years with that. Cedar Falls has already applied to the SBRC for all of this amount in the next exhibit, because we ran into the timeline. We had to get it in, and we could always refuse it, or they can change it, they can back it off, but it will be in front of them. I think it's the last Friday in February.
Michael, this might be a better question for either Dr. Barney or Mr. Martin, but how, what date do they use to determine the per pupil? Because I noticed on the one exhibit, they used October twenty-first, which I thought was probably close to special ed count date for the, but then on the other one, they used January twenty-seventh. So I was just curious, how do they know on the River Hills one, which is the next exhibit? I was kind of comparing the two. Because that determines the per, they take the total amount and divide it by how many students, and so if there's forty students versus fifty students or--
Right. Well, we have, the official count date is October--
Halloween.
Third Friday or end of October.
Yeah.
It was my understanding that special ed was closer to December first.
Right.
Now, what I don't understand with the River Hills is the administrator's salary is exactly the same from the one we did in November.
Right.
Not showing any increase for the second year, which I didn't notice that till I was looking back at that today, and I didn't get an answer, but they're just taking a point in time of who's the actual person in that place as of the time that we apply for this.
Okay.
It's not really a count date--
Okay.
--issue with this part, other than what they name. I mean, because they could add ten more kids tomorrow.
Right.
And we would actually have, the cost would then get dispersed in smaller amounts because it would be actual cost, or it could go the other way.
Certainly. Okay, that helps.
So in addition to this administrative cost, we already have transferred the tuition out?
Yes, they will bill us the actual cost of instruction per child.
Oh, the actual cost, not the--
Not the revenue.
Not the per pupil cost?
Correct. It will be the actual cost divided by the number of students. So if River Hills costs two million dollars to operate, it will be divided by a hundred and six children, and that's what everybody will pay.
Okay, anything further? For Mr. Coughlin?
No, just the reminder that the first exhibit G is for Woodward Granger or Grandwood for the fourteen fifteen school year.
For this year.
Current school year.
The next one is for--
Next year.
Fifteen sixteen.
Correct.
Okay. All right. With that in mind, all those in favor of the motion to approve the Grandwood Consortium with SBRC, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. We can move on to then item H, which I know we've discussed here, but I will get that motion on the table. The motion is, the board approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, for special education administrative costs associated with River Hills Consortium programs for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year as presented.
Also move?
Thank you. And a second? Thank you. And a second? Thanks, Angela. And Mr. Coughlin, anything further on that?
I don't think so. I think you can just see the breakdown of the number of students that are coming from multiple districts going into that River Hills program. So, it's quite important to all of these districts.
So, were these numbers to change by next fall, by 10, either to the plus or minus? Do we have to go back to SBRC and amend the amount that we've asked?
No, what they approve is what we get.
Okay.
Regardless of what it changes.
Okay.
I saw they took out the graduating students.
Yeah, they lessed out the 104.
Yeah. Now, this is in a financial question, but just a practical question. I didn't realize all these other districts were going to River Hills. Do those students, do they physically go to the River Hills building every day? Because some of, like Marshalltown and Monizuma, some of them would be probably over an hour.
Yeah, they do.
They'll drive in every day?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then drive home?
That's, yeah.
Okay.
They do, because I...
That's my understanding, yes.
Hubbard Radcliffe, as it were, so.
It's, it's a, you know, they're taking a van or bringing them over.
I was just curious.
Anything further for Mr. Coughlin? All right. So, all those in favor of approving the River Hills School Consortium with SBRC, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. Motion carried. That takes care of our action items for this evening. I was delinquent when I began our meeting tonight. We're a little scarce up here tonight. We've had three board members have some things come up today, so I want to just let everybody know, everybody's all right. But we do have a quorum, and we're good to go conducting business, but a couple of people had some things come up that they weren't expecting. So, I'll move on to Dr. Lindeman's superintendent report.
Absolutely. Well, for those who have been watching the news, it's been an interesting few weeks at the Capitol for a variety of reasons. One being the calendar issues, one being the budget. They're also expected to take some action on the assessment, the state assessment here shortly. And so, it's been, it's been kind of interesting, and I want to make some comments about the calendar first. And this is, I guess, you know, for the board, but also for any of our viewers and our 12 people in the audience. We are expecting to bring the calendar for next year to the next board meeting. And so, the board will be getting that. Matter of fact, I was going to send that today, and I didn't, but I'll get that tonight, just so you can look at kind of a draft of what we're looking at. And we've had a calendar committee working on it. We have been, we're obviously late on, later than usual on approving that. I think we tried to get it here by December and, you know, January maybe at the latest, but the legislature has been trying to decide exactly where it's going to go. And if you remember, back in December, they passed a law that set, or I guess it was clarification, that they would not automatically grant waivers for an early start date. And so, now, just this afternoon, that is kind of being duked out in the Capitol. And so, we just heard this afternoon that now the House has passed that they would go to an August 30, 23rd start date. So, we are currently in Waterloo. The Calendar Committee is proposing a start date of August 31st, and so, which is the first date that is allowable by the first clarification from December. And so, now, I believe what we're going to do with this new information, just from about 5:00 this afternoon, I think we will just take a little bit of time between, in the next, probably by Friday this week, and review with the Calendar Committee. And certainly, if anybody has any input, we absolutely want to hear from, you know, staff or parents. So, whether we would look at just continuing with the August 31st proposed start date, which is now our second proposed start date, or whether we would look at a third proposed start date sometime after the 23rd of August. So, we'll just take a look at that and then try to bring that back, and I'm sure we'll have some lively discussion. But it's been really interesting, I think, just to see how political it is, you know, the State Fair. I've been reading information from lobbyists, and everybody has a very strong opinion of when school should start, and some people believe that it should not be anybody's choice except for the board. And so, you know, with, of course, getting input from everybody. So, anyway, that's interesting. So, we will hopefully, you'll hear more from us this week. And I would also encourage everybody on the other avenue with the budget. The state, unfortunately, is 12 months behind setting per pupil expenditures, or the per pupil growth. And so, that is supposed to be, was supposed to be set by February of last year, and it is not yet set. And so, we are just a few months from starting our new fiscal year, and we still do not know what our per pupil growth will be. So, that is maybe confusing, or you can pick an adjective, concerning, discerning, maybe, I don't know. So, pay attention to that, I think. I think that's really important, that we advocate for a growth factor that makes sense for us, and that it allows us to do what we need to do for the students of Waterloo. So, and then, just a couple more things. Friday, I know parents know that we had no school on Friday because they had their children at home or somewhere, but it was a really important day in professional development. We had great professional development. I looked at some of the plans and heard some of the feedback today, and it just was a very valuable day. So, we thank the parents for really working with us on that day and giving us that time to really grow professionally. And, let's see, what else? I know Friday, we are taking, as everyone knows, we've been working with the Technical High Schools concept and looking at that. And so, on Friday, we are taking some community members, and we're going to go to Des Moines Technical High School for a visit, and very much looking forward to that, and just kind of take a look and see what's there, and see what we can learn from that. So, and then, whether it's appropriate or not, I'm going to give a shout-out to PAIN AME. Yesterday, they had their soul food luncheon, and it was absolutely amazing food. So, I took my whole entire family and had some ribs, and it was fantastic. So, thank you to them and all of the people who were in the kitchen, because I think it took a lot of people. So, that's it.
Thanks, Dr. Lindeman. So, now, it's time for information from board members. I started to my left last week, so I'll start with you this week. Go, La, you're already, you're ready to go.
Actually, don't have, just a clarification, that just passed the House, though, today, so it's still got a ways to go. We don't even know if it's going to, where it's going to land. Okay. No, I didn't have anything else. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Now, come back over there. I'll start, go with you, Angie. Go ahead.
Mike said he doesn't have anything, if you guys didn't hear that. I just, I'm, I just, this is just really personal, but I grew up in a biracial home, and as a result of being raised by just my Caucasian mother, she always made sure that throughout, throughout our childhood, that we would watch things around Black History, because she didn't have that experience, so she wanted us to be educated about it. And with it being Black History Month, my family yesterday watched the movie Selma, which, if I cry, I apologize. That's why I'm telling you, it's really personal. And I just wanted to say to those who do listen, who have paved the way, like Dr. Smith, and, sorry, thank you for allowing me to be able to sit up here and represent the kids. And also, to the kids, Dr. Martin Luther King was only 39-years-old when he died. He started that movement when he was in his 20s. You can do whatever your dreams are. You can start now. So, in honor of Black History Month, I just wanted to say those things and say thank you for the opportunities to be able to sit here and advocate for our kids.
That's great.
Very well said.
Thank you. Mike, anything?
All right. Well, whether it's appropriate or not, I'm a swim mom, so I have to give a shout-out, because districts were this past, this past Saturday at Cedar Falls, for our district that our high schools are in. And I just want to say, congratulations to East High's Tyler Camp. He made it to state in two individual events. And the West High had two relays, and a gentleman, Kyle Lenninger, who also made it in two individual events. The 200 free, or the 200 medley relay and the 400 free, Kyle Graves, Kyle Lenninger, Jackson McNally, Parker McNally, Dan Rafferty, and Nathan Vignoni. So, yay. Yay swimmers. It's a tough sport. So, that's my report for tonight. And if there's not anything further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Did they raise the water temperature for you?
I had nothing to do with it. It was at Holmes. I had nothing to do with it. It wasn't even at Central, so.
I think we need an investigation.
Yeah, an investigation. No, they did not. So, it was nice and warm, though, let me tell you. So, all right. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Also move.
And a second? All those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye. We're adjourned. Thanks.